...tonight, Regional Planning Commission Agenda on Page Three, and Item Letter E under Section Two. Now, hey guys, what do you think?
Just wanna thank you for providing these, it gives a better visual of what we're looking to do. I'm completely torn with this one. I hate to see, sorry, thank you. I hate to see commercial extend back that far into the residential area, but there are a lot of good points being made. The fact that, to see someone wanting to do something with those lots that's just been sitting there, is a great thing to see. I know that building on the corner by Bonner, I actually happened to, when I was looking to purchase a building, I looked into that, and I know that there are some concerns with that building. It's, yeah, it wasn't built on a good foundation. And, so I kinda see this as an opportunity, per se, to deal with that area. But like Carrie said, I agree with a lot of points she made. So I'm honestly a little torn about this one. I just kinda would like to see what the other board members' opinion is.
Do we have a real clear idea of exactly what's going to be on that property? I mean, the coffee shop and casino, gas station?
I'm sorry, do you want me to address the documents?
Is that okay? Can you do that?
Is he the applicant?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Come on forward.
Josh Lieberman with Pine West Development. Good evening, appreciate you having me this evening. As far as the access concerns, that's kinda something we've been working on for the last nine-plus months to alleviate commercial traffic deep into any residential. As you can see, our main focus on the access is keeping access off of the highway and then access off of these portions over here. So none of the access coming back into Avenue D, into the residential, this will no longer go through. So you know by the elevations, we've got about a four percent grade change going from...
North to south?
Yeah, going from, or sorry, south to north, got about a four percent grade change. So this will all be completely enclosed, from elevations, retaining walls, privacy fencing, to eliminate any light pollution. Light pollution now can't go past the property line, so there's no lighting concerns. But the uses within this building is the convenience store with a drive-through coffee shop, as well as the back building is proposed as a restaurant, bar, casino. So that's what I...
As far as Avenue E, would there be any issues with, like, emergency vehicle turnaround there? And where that's going to dead-end and...
No, this width will stay the exact same, so we will not make any changes.
But does that allow for a fire truck to turn around if they have to go in there?
It's eighty-foot wide, it's an eighty-foot right-of-way.
That's been considered?
We'll double-check the turning radiuses.
Okay. As far as the gaming is concerned, can you go into a little bit more detail on what you anticipate there as far as gaming partners who's gonna be involved in that, how that's...
It's a local Nevada gaming operator that would be operating the entire property. So my business partner and I own the property, we lease the land to the tenant on a twenty-year with twenty-five years' worth of options. So they lease the land from us once we close later this year, and they handle all their construction and improvements and operations. So, long-running family in the state of Nevada that, been working with them for many years. So, they would be handling all of those pieces.
Judging from the four percent grade from Altman, that means that the retaining wall down on D Streets could be probably about fifteen feet high.
As far as back here?
Yeah.
Probably, I mean, we'll be playing with the grades within this area. So I mean, we've got some grade options to come down, to taper it and to step it down. So we've got several different grading plans that we can bring forward. And then, like I said, we wouldn't have any access off of Avenue D, and all the access will be coming from these points here.
How many swap machines do you post that are weird? Does that mention?
Has not, I can get you a floor plan from our tenant, probably in the next couple of weeks. They're working on some building designs.
And did you have an estimate of how many new employees would, this would employ?
We can get you all of that information, absolutely. Yeah, between the restaurant, bar, and casino, convenience store, and then this is a drive-through coffee shop on the end right there. Everybody can guess who it is, I'm sure.
But no motel rooms, correct?
Correct. Correct, no motel rooms within this project, it's just not feasible. Not anything from a cost standpoint or operator standpoint.
So would that would require a non-restrictive gaming license?
I'm not exactly positive we continue to have this discussion on the options within the hotel rooms and gaming.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there is an ordinance, the deal's with us, so...
Okay, is there any questions?
My concern is, is one of the people that stood up and was against this, I don't think we should be changing any zoning until somebody owns that, wants it changed.
It'd be a conditional zoning until we closed on the property. So we have to be able to obtain all of the approvals, but none of the zoning classification would change until after our purchase. So it'd be conditional zoning, so we have all those approvals known, we can go forward.
So tonight, what are you hoping to get from us?
Approval on the items that are on the agenda for our ability to continue to move forward.
So it is conditional, and I think that was kind of a good point made, so just wanted to...
Yeah, that approval could be the...
Approval upon the condition of ownership.
Correct, yes, that's how we do all of our projects across all of our states. So any zoning classifications, road changes, any of those items, don't become effective, they're all conditional, until we take ownership of properties.
So that's how the motion would have to be made, if you're going to consider it?
That way it doesn't impact any of the users today. So if something happens over the next six months with other approvals and government entities outside of the city levels, when we get in Department of Transportation and things happen, that's why these are all conditional approvals.
Yeah, if the project does not go through, then it's not an edged-in stone.
Absolutely, correct. We don't wanna affect anybody's properties. We don't close on properties until all of those conditions are available, and then something happens, nothing has changed to those individuals' properties.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I mean, can that be conditional upon like the non-restrictive gaming license that might be required for that too, or is that not part of this?
Well, the, we wouldn't be involved in the licensing on that, would we?
Not the city, either.
The city would be involved with that.
Okay. I just know there's some concern about that, so...
Yeah, yeah, they'd have to deal with the ordinance on that.
Okay.
But you could make it conditional upon them obtaining the license for gaming.
Yeah.
Yep. But, you know, that's outside of your...
Sure.
Any other questions? I see this as an improvement. You know, like I said, I hate to see it move, see commercial move back into the residential area, but this is an opportunity, really, it is a really rough area. And I know this affects many people, and this is a big decision. But just with everything on the table, I know there's a big process you have to go through as well. This is just one of the many steps. I'm going to say I'm in favor of this project.
Okay, is that, are you making a motion to approve it on a condition now?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Is there somebody?
Oh.
Sorry, I'm so sorry. I just unmuted.
Okay, alright.
Okay.
Geese or something?
Alright, yeah, I'll go ahead and move to approve on the condition of a, so, the gaming licensing.
And ownership of property.
And the sale, ownership of the property. So those two conditions, I would...
By a single owner.
By a single one.
Do you have a second?
Yeah, there's a question about the fact that it's a casino without a motel. Has that been talked about? Under Nevada laws, as we were told, you can't have a casino if there is motel rooms in that area.
I think that's an ordinance that the city's kind of adopted, and that's what they're gonna make it conditional upon, is making sure that they meet all the criteria to be able to get their gaming licenses, is that right?
Yeah, that's not for your board to decide.
Right.
That's a political, or whether they'll be conditional, or other matters that may be modified. It looks like the board wouldn't be able to condition that on the gaming license, because in order to build the buildings and the property, that essentially would hinder our building official, Peterson's, ability to grant those building licenses.
But somebody's gonna look out for that beyond our...
Yes, that would be the city's obligation to do that.
That's not our bailiwick.
Right, okay, understandable.
Okay, yeah, I'll move to approve the project based on the sale of the property per owner, I'm sorry.
Solely on the condition that it, that he obtains full ownership of that property.
Right, okay.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Ken a second. Take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. That was an aye from you? Okay. All those opposed? And we do have an abstention?
Abstain.
And George abstains.
Thank you.
Okay, it passes one of those conditions. We go to Item F. For the consideration of petition of man vacation or abandonment of the road or reason of applicants represented by Pine West Public LLC, requesting an approximate two hundred and eighty feet along by eighty west portion of Avenue E between Blocks 29 and 32 be vacated, abandoned, or accommodate future commercial development. Applicants to the property, addresses, and/or general locations in Ely, Nevada are listed in tonight's Regional Planning Commission Agenda on Page Three, in Item Letter F, under Section One.
But I believe Mr. Chachas is going to renew.
Mr. Chairman, I must disclose that my brother has property in that area, and I must abstain only in a clear case which this appears to be. Mr. Chair, the NRS 281A8.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest in matter before this body affects my brother and my commitment in a private capacity to the interests of my brother. So I conclude that the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my situation would be material, my relationship with my brother John would be materially affected. And because this being a clear case of disqualifying conflict of interest, I'm going to be abstaining from voting in this matter.
Thank you, George.
And Mr. Chair, a renewal of the letter that you read from Mr. Dietrich, because I believe it had to do with Eddie Hap as well.
Yes, will you read that?
No. Just that, that is entered into the...
Okay. We will note again for Item F, the letter from Ellen Restetrick.
That was previously...
That was previously on Item E, read into the record.
And Mr. Chachas, for the, for any other extension, you can just renew it, since you've already read that, the whole thing into the record. So if there's another extension at tonight's meeting, you can just renew.
Renew?
Yeah.
Okay.
Rather than read the whole thing.
Alright, I'd like a copy of that letter also.
Okay, yeah. We can do that.
And the date that it was received. Can you do that?
What's that?
And the date that it was received.
Yes.
Don't see me, George.
Pardon me?
Yeah, talk to Jennifer, she'll have it for you.
Been there, done that.
It's part of the record, George.
Okay. Right, same ground rules go into effect, I guess.
You wrote any group public hearings?
Public hearing?
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. I'm Caroline McIntosh-Neely, and I want to express my concern about closing Avenue E. We were very fortunate to have a highway project, but with that highway project on Altman, there's really no turning, safe turning onto Eighth Street. And what people are forced to do, or choose to do, is to use Avenue E to get on through there, especially to Nevada Bank and Trust and to those businesses up in there. But if you'll ride on, if you'll drive on Altman, you'll see that that was eliminated as far as any safe way to turn. And it's, I'm really opposed to closing a street for any reason like that. It is a safety issue. And I think if we had our fire marshal here tonight, Pat Stork, he would really be not in favor of anything like that. It's even hard to get things that, conditional licenses, if we can't get fire trucks, and things would turn around, and as, of course, with the new business. So I would like to express that I would be opposed to that, just for the safety issues and what was already expressed about Avenue D. It'll force people down to Avenue D and get more traffic down there, which is more homes. Secondly, I have the ordinances on the motel rooms, and I know that's not your bailiwick, but it is a big concern that they seem to want to jump from that when we need rooms. So I'm certainly opposed to anything without following the ordinances that were very well thought out previously. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks, Caroline. Any more public input on Item?
F1.
Sandy Moreno, East Eighth Street. She's right about when you did the construction, it was done on Altman, we've got a lot of traffic. But that construction is done. And so I don't see the need to worry about using Avenue E as a haul road for all the construction equipment anymore. And we were very aware of it, 'cause it shook our house every time someone went by. There's minimal traffic on Avenue E. A lot of the traffic that does come there are the things that aren't supposed to be, like the side-by-sides and the quads and the dirt bikes and things like that that aren't supposed to be on Avenue E or East Eighth Street. We do see a lot of that. Talking with Josh, they've been working with the bank also, to help him out with his parking area and making that more accessible. If you leave Avenue E open, I will never, ever be able to get out of my backyard, never, if you increase that flow of traffic. And I'm for the project. If you do want to leave Avenue E open, you better put a four-way stop sign at East Eight and Avenue E, because most people run that stop sign, and it just amazes me that no one's been hit yet. And the quads like to drive right through our property, in between our house and the pole, the powered pole, and it's amazing that no one's been killed during that. I don't think Avenue D will get that much more traffic, because the construction is closed on Altman. Anything being affected should be further down. And so we are very aware of the traffic that flows through there, and it's actually quite minimal. A lot of it just goes to the bank. I don't see any school buses, very rare do I see a truck. I think it's just because someone's lost. And I think leaving Avenue E stubbed out at our property line will make it accessible for emergency vehicles. That was a concern of ours, having full access to all of our property. We have seven parcels there. So if we ever wanted to do something in the future, we need to have that open. So I don't think the traffic impact on D will be as bad as what they're thinking. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Just briefly, Craig Peterson, building official, also certified fire marshal. I've kinda looked over the plans. Access that's required for emergency services, fire department access is gonna be a hundred and fifty feet from any point on a building. Anytime a road gets over a hundred and fifty feet, then a turnaround is required. We've kinda done a cursory review of the plan that's been submitted, and as far as the fire code is concerned, don't really have any issues with the access for the emergency personnel. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Greg.
Good evening, I'm Spencer Hayfun, I'm the President and CEO of Nevada Bank and Trust. I just wanna clarify a few things. This lady in front of me said that Sean and I are working together to, for him to help me on my parking lot, we've had conversations. I need to make that very clear for the record. We don't have an agreement, we have nothing. I don't want her to make it sound like we've got a deal and I'm supporting this wholeheartedly. I just need to make that very clear. Second, I wanna address the safety issue that was brought up, it's hardly crossed my mind to talk about tonight, but it's very evident that with the reconfiguration of the lanes on Altman, there is a safety issue. I have people, historically, people could pull in front of my bank, park, get out, and come to the front door of my bank. They can't do that now, but they still do. We stopped a lady, they pulled into the front of the bank. Trucks coming up and down that road, we actually had to go and stop her and get her in the back. And so I just need, you need to understand that that is a safety issue, because there is no parking there, and people historically have parked there. So we are doing our best in the, from the bank side, to say, hey, you can't park here anymore, but people still do it. And so it is a safety, I just wanna make that clear, there is a safety issue. Now, as far as the traffic on East Street, I don't know that it's ever gonna change, because that, even though the road will be abandoned, if that's the case, as far as what I see, there's nothing gonna stop anybody from going one into the other. I don't know if that's the case, if there'll be a wall built, or how they'll build retaining walls or anything like that. I don't, I'm not privy to that information. I just wanna bring those two points up. Nevada Bank and Trust does not have an agreement with Pine West in any manner. And two, the safety issues on Altman, they are, they are an accurate statement, that there is safety problems there. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Brian Reed, I live, love and hate the latter Avenue. My family, again, I appreciate you as a board, the members of this board, serving and doing what you do. I know it's sometimes a thankless job, but I appreciate what you do. My family owns the property on Eighth Street, Eighth and Altman, Eighth and Avenue E, that whole walk there. And I'd just like to reiterate the safety concerns of turning down Eighth Street. As you come down Great Basin Boulevard and turn around there, if there's traffic flowing across from, from, from Altman Street, it's almost impossible to get into that lane and safely turn. It's much easier to go straight through and then go across Avenue E. I'm just concerned that eliminating that as a possibility is a real safety issue with closing Avenue E. And as I understand it, there is a big wall gonna be built in the middle of Avenue E, I don't know how high that is, that it will not be able to, traffic will not be able to flow that way. So that's, that's my main concern, is safety there. I will admit, I'm also a convenience store owner, so that's, I'm thrilled about another convenience store down. But beyond that, the whole idea of the safety in that area is a concern.
Any other public input at this moment? Okay, we'll close it for public input, and we will open Item F2, Discussion for Possible Action. Recommendation of Approval to the Ely City Council of A, Petition for Vacation of Abandonment of Road Heavens. Applicants representing by Pine West Public LLC, requesting that an approximate two eighty-foot length by eighty-foot width portion of the Avenue E between Blocks 29 and 32 be vacated and abandoned to accommodate a future commercial development. The applicants of the property, addresses, and/or general locations in Ely, Nevada, are listed in tonight's Regional Planning Commission Agenda on Page Four, in Items Letter F, under Section Two. Okay, let's, open that up to the board.
And just for clarification, it was written as, or type, a type of card from the letter is eighty inches, it's eighty inches.
Yeah.
As you stated.
Yeah, very narrow, very narrow. Okay. I, I would suggest we maybe observe the same approach to this item as we did to the last one. Because have it, you know, pursuant to the ownership and filing of the licenses and so forth.
Well, first of all, I appreciate all of you coming forth and, you know, stating some concerns of yours that we might not realize, you know, living there, obviously you know it better than we do. From what I've heard, and there's some pros and some cons, of course, but by closing Avenue E would increase the traffic on Avenue D. Is that what everyone understands? I mean, I don't know how to get around that, which also alleviate the problem that was just brought up about being able to turn on Eighth Street, where now they're going from Great Basin down using Avenue E is access to the, to the bank there. So, yeah, I don't know. I guess you gotta pick that traffic up sometime, it would be on Avenue D. But my concern about safety vehicles getting in there where you're dead, you have a dead end when you turn on Avenue E, would be satisfied.
It'll definitely affect routing of traffic, there's no doubt. My main concern was the fire issue, I think Craig would address in that right away. I'm not really happy with some of the new designs of, you know, the improvements on our roads, and I know a lot of people have expressed that as well. But there's no doubt that there'll be rerouting when you close a street like this. That's kinda the nature of the beast.
Well, I think change is hard for everyone. When all these street improvements and changes were made, I think you have all kinds of complaints, because it's different, it's not what we're used to. Last meeting, when this was first brought before us, I think the question I asked about a traffic study being done, and they said that that would be done. So I think as far as that goes, I mean, it's great to hear all these comments, but we probably need to trust that the traffic study that's gonna be done, they're, they have the education and knowledge to do that correctly, rather than us guess on that. So is, I mean, is that still an item that would have to be completed and approved by NDA or MSU, right?
I would assume it's NDA.
And actually, I've seen a lot more, just a matter of course, a lot more heavy traffic that seems to happen on Avenue C than anywhere else. That seems to be the other alternate route that people take, is see that it crosses over the tracks that goes into Central and Ely Street and so forth. So I don't think DNE is gonna change things to DNE that much.
Yeah, that's a good point. Well, um...
They also, they also have that overhead power line in that.
Yeah, the, yeah, overhead power line situation, what, what was addressed on that?
I don't know if it's been resolved, or what.
You can ask the applicant.
Under F, as I read that, I'm not sure how to interpret it. It says Recommendation of Approval to Ely City Council of Petition for Vacation. We're just passing the on?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're not the final say.
So you get to do this again? So you get to do this again.
The overhead power line. Josh Lieberman, Pine West, sorry. So your question, I think, was on the, the power lines?